Good morning once more, I am a boy Tasmuslis servant aka Beppeko. Good morning once more, good morning Salom, good morning to the world. And again, if you are new to this, brace up. If you are not a regular follower, I guess you know what you would expect. And we are going to do more of it, better of it, you know. Today, we come for discuss issues there. But more important, the town hall meeting, what we presidents get within cabinet and the people there at large. Good morning once more. Before we continue, I still want emphasize states that we are not going to attack personalities there, or political groups there, or any type of groups. We come for discuss issues there, issues there where they affect we all at large. Or maybe issues there where it will benefit we, or ideas there we will create. You know, also add to issues them, maybe enlighten others there for see more clear, or clearer, you know. So we do not want anybody for take this personal. If the information not sit down well with you, we hope say it not go upset you. You know, for take any drastic actions there, we not necessary. You know, because we all now want, one Salom, one people. We all need for remember that. And we all get we own different views there. And we for learn for value and respect other people in views and concerns. Even if you not sit down proper or right with you. So I want say good morning once more. And today, we the start time, you know, with the town hall meeting. And now the first gentleman of the state is Excellency Dr. Julius Matabio. And we the start with. And I know say we get episode 10, but we on schedule for August the 15th. But this not a test case matter. But to me not a test case, not just what you would do. But we just want give you a taste of what in Tasmu can do, you know. And I want say good morning once more, good morning once more, good morning to the world globally, once more. Any south side day, good morning to you. Well, three days ago or so, there was a town hall meeting. Where we presidents be get within cabinet relating the big five. I man get straight to the point, I no want carry up a book talk, you know. Within cabinet and people there. And we be see say the town hall it flop. And this program here will be happen also then, you know, poster, disseminator, on YouTube and other other platforms there. For least religion as they watch. And we go like first for congratulate the president. Because this not a bold step for take, you know, for coming out and talking with the people. But talk to Salom money. Not to alter for send a representative. Send the minister, send this, send that, say go talk for me. This trip, you know, you come out boldly and say, I mean for do the talking. And who say true for I for talk, we no say we presidents not to talk man. Not to man we say be talk to people there and pass it, like in the public, you know, for pass on information. Now man with ideas there, with great ideas there, but in honor for passing their ideas there, you know verbally. We no say we president get stack kind problem there, you know. So now a big step for him, for step out in comfort zone and say, let me talk to the people there. All man gets inability and disability. So man can think and talk, you know, and pass some good information. So man not able to have, maybe he not accustomed or used to it, you know. So if the fall is green, it green, if it red, it red, if it black, it black, if it white, it white, we for talker. We no for either, you know. So we no say that part to presidents get problem. But it bold enough for say no, I mean go do me on talking today. You know, we no go ask me questions there, and me go represent myself. So now let we continue, the big five, I no be able listen to the entire platform. But I go tell me do, and I believe say, all what I listen to irrelevant enough. You know, for make sure say we analyze them. And we go start with education. And when I know say we presidents this, I want team who, the party they not chestful. They proud of, this free education, you know, quality education, etc., etc. Well, now one of the first discussion that we come on the table. And this, now only Tasmuslis and views them, subjected to Tasmuslis and views them. All what here they say, if you listen, you buy Alhamdulillah. But if you not listen, you not buy, and not become a problem, because now me on independent views them. And they work independently. We not to a puppet, who person they push say, go talk this, go talk that. So now, let me continue. To me all understanding what we obtain, what we get, what we abstract from the conversation there, we come to education. About 20%. You know, the budget of government, they are located to education. 20%. When they talk of 20%, not to small money, not to small money. Well, some they will say, eh not enough, but 20% out of 100. Now a big, 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 big revolution for Salom. A big revolution. But say this money here, we really invest the other side, this 20% it go direct to education. But make sure say the beginning not pay school fee. We go to provide books there. We go to feed the beginning at school. Et cetera, et cetera. But anything where I point out ready for analyze, Tasmu get a counter. I make low now understand this through. I get a counter. I guess some team who they can add parties, you know. So we governments severely proud of this free education. That they do well. Eh well enough. With 20% of the budget, government in budget, we are allocated to, you know, education, eh good enough. Where some not become privileged for travel. But I believe say, now you can then at one place which you found, or your computer. You can see the wall, you can see what in there take place now the wall. It still on travel. You go then there, what you did now in a country, because you know what in there take place there. You know the activity there, you know what in there go on there, you know. The wall on become, you know, small, recount to technology. So 20% of them budgets there are, they still emphasize on free school fee, free books there. And what again, feeding, the feeding still a continue, that's not a question. Some schools then they they get a free, power wouldn't belong to government, you know, entity. They can only private schools there excluded or exempt from this. From their private school there. But any public school, where they under, or the liberty of Salom, but gets this privilege. You know, yes students there are not for pay school fee. Or get students and still where they pay school fee in a certain school there. If not to the capital city, go be the province, or deepness of the province. Now, let we continue. We always emphasize about quality education. What to make education quality? Now where you get the right teachers there, you get the right materials there. You get the rights, you know, chairs there and tables there for the students and for sit down, if you enough safe in a classroom. Because most of their chair and tables are not enough. We get a computer system for make sure say, we match up to the international. Because that's not quality education. We no for FBN. The wall not for there 20 steps ahead of Salom, we say for able match up. But if we students then take today one basic computer, say not in a primary school, or secondary school. You know, how you go able advance your knowledge? How you go able know what in our research? How you go able become competent for use computers there, or even your phone, you know, for do basic research? Because their phone they are not just there for take pictures there, for videotape yourself, for bluff bluff. Their phone there now now, one old computer. So if you not privileged enough for let your parents ban for you, or obtain now. You know, you not get the access now school, you know, for learn about things there. Why me start me middle school overseas? We always get computer courses there. Now they are learn for type, I mean a very fast typer. Now they are learn how for go on the internet, how for do, how for chat, or do a research, etc., etc. We beginning they learn anything say about us Salom, where they talk of quality education. We for impact the education platform with the tools there necessary, so then beginning I go obtain what we call quality. Starting with the teachers there, the tools there, the setup of the classrooms there. You know, the flexibility of school fees there, you know, and the free lunch. Because even overseas, from one I start me to school, they are graduate high school. Lunch, breakfast, so I no want they pay, all learning a government will they take care of. We can a public entity. And that's why happen also inside Salom. Now a small country with many resource system, but they experience what we call poverty. Now the most shameful part is, small country with many resource system still experience poverty. Well, other countries then get about over 50 or 52 states. And all their states there are, you know, they grow, don't develop. They able make things there happen. But with this small state, take today, we no able grow. And we no say Sivellunians there will get a problem. So before I continue, I make low we presidents understand say. Yes, we can feel in plight, or in pain, or in struggle there. Because now country eh not easy for develop, eh not easy for do anything, where you want create about change. At times are the people there can put you backwards, the people are not can become supportive, etc., etc. Whilst governments for able for fair way, for make sure say the things they also what they do for the people there, will bring a kind into reality. Eh they happen, eh question. So now when they talk of education, eh also count to human capital. Today, I want print something that you hear, where they discuss human capital. They say human capital start with education, for build up the motor man. Whether now eh go become the next president, eh go become an entrepreneur, a businessman. Eh go able help for reform society, or creates changes there because of the impact in knowledge where they obtain. You know, for eh, you know, society at large. Human capital, one person capable transform a town, a city, a country, you know. But so many where they come impacted with human capital positively, capable creates drastic changes there. Where inside Salom, what's now with human capital? Now, let we start with the parents there. Now this now the prince that you hear. What's now human capital inside Salom? Now people and they born beginning for what? Or inside Africa in general. Where the parents there, or the comrade, or the father, no able get a earnings, or work employment. Now they beginning there, and then they do the work. So Baku come right now, they born beginning, but let them beginning there, work for them. For make them beginning there feed the family. Then they capitalize by them beginning there. Now the other way around, we for go to do something for benefit or better they will beginning there. But now now they beginning they work for better the family household, how this to go about? Every morning, I not care outside you be, you go sit in a small, small beginning, you touch market for go sell. Because maybe the mama they go sell, maybe the papa in the pass something different, you know. So the beginning not become responsible, don't start for suffer at a tender age. School not go be a priority, not go prioritize high school anymore. Every now, the every day, now the beginning they touch market for sell. For face car morning house, on the sun, on the rain, no matter the weather in condition, we now watch everything in the streets. So we start first for blame the parents there, now then they capitalize by them beginning. And then they suffer, then beginning. They not can want same beginning for grow. And they can frustrate same beginning at the early stage. Now, let we continue, the teachers there, then they for exploit students there in a school. Then they for take money. Then they for say, well, if we need, if we need to get enough pay, laugh fair way for go to, you know, charge them the students there. So I go buy me Benz one by. So I go buy the land one by, so I go build a house one by, as long as we not teacher. You know, eh go to exploit students there. Where exam time come, eh collect, collect for past students there. This eh happen in universities there. Another swear institution. When I saw swear can follow Baku people there, Baku teachers there, we no they say all. So teachers send them back for take advantage of the youth there. The parents and then eh, then eh, then eh start them. The teachers there, then eh continue with them, you know, for exploit, for reap more benefits. Then let go to the third one, the policeman eh. Well eh, now any south side they no say, they able go knock down, eh make money, then they de force. Then they de force. Any south side they no say they able go knock down for make money, then they de force. Any case where they no say they able knock down for make money, they can force. Anything when I for make money, think of policeman eh. The law, the law not stretch again oh, the law eh ben. Maybe the only south side go see say the law stretch small, maybe not cut. But we come to the one day where they enforce there, them back they so concerned about, you know, they say for capitalize. For drive da bears, for buy their land, for build house, no one FBN. All man they pass succeed, why make Usef no for succeed? You know? So all man they go thinks about the illegal way, the illegal way, where don't make we country so corrupt. The ministries there, we no go talk. Maybe papa government go fund certain minister, say go do this in a certain town, or in a certain village. Go create this project, eh go do eh, eh go face a kind to reality. Eh go delay that project, they take time down. But although they don't get any resource and the money for do eh, eh go delay that project. That money they go fashion there, now I use the president in your world. Eh say some man, the money keep fashion there, and then eh go, go eh be to talk about Exa, now that's a use. So someone the ministers there, the money they fashion there. In every facet where it can to, you know, empowerment, human capital, eh bad of. You know, this not a rat race. A true rat race. Well Salom, we need to sorry for Usef anymore. You go now any shop, what in there for charge you 8,000, some they go push eh 10,000, for make excess profit. All man want make extra, extra profit, where they suffer the mass system. So not so just governmental, even the businessman back they help for suffer, the system. Yes. They help for suffer the system. So we get a lot of changes there for make and for do. How they changes they have go come about? That's Allah now help we. Because even where you get the right sense system, the right ideas there. You go don't create a team, if not take time, and the team where you create could help you fulfill. Because they not believe in your vision. Them back one succeed, them back one stay on, them back one eat stay on by, at a early stage. Now let we continue, we no come for make this law. You know, so that's have be the first phrase we don't discuss. Now one jump into the second objective, fit Salom. We presidents discuss this, for fit Salom. Emphasize where it come to agriculture. That eh for prioritize what we call agriculture. Because now the backbone of every country. But make sure say we stabilize what we call food, food for they, enough food for they. All man for eh we eat, for eh before eat two or three times per the day. But eh food not eh, what in where they buy out, eh expensive for import and come. The way it come, back go for tax, or tax orders there for pay high cost. Because nowadays, nobody know I be a farmer. So man think say famine, like a local work. But they no say, eh money, even the white man, the Chinese man eh, etc., etc. They get major farm landscapes there where they invest money per. But in every great idea, now investments, now in the goal eh, that this I want now the government understand. In every great idea, now capital look at it. We presidents say, him back get a fish farm, and fish them be big. They get poetry farm, eh they do well. And I believe say, eh they spend capital, time, and other resources there, for make sure say, this in poultry, or in fish farm, or maybe in rest farm, for develop. What in there affect farmers in a Salom? Even though yes, we no say Baku man no I'm going to the farm. But technology don't eh grow. We need the right machine eh, we need the right tool eh. Not so the human, or the motor man for go on a farm again, they butoh, they dig. Them constraints eh they eh heavy. Who gets the right mechanical tools eh, or machines eh, etc., etc., for empower them farmers there. I believe say, the farming business go grow. If the banks eh, where they will start for loan Sivellunians eh, capital without high interest. Because the interest rate eh can so high, man in the freight for take loan, eh go fine. But we come to the banks eh, go for loan their own company Sivellunians. Now what, they go loan a foreigner, but this Salom man no go get any loan. If the one yes Salom man loan, the interest rate skyrocket. So we need tools eh, we need machines eh, because in other parts of the world, now machine they do the work where it come to agriculture. For expedite things eh, things eh they go fast, go quickly. You know, the manure eh, but make sure say they become fruitful. You know, there's a system, that system there will not get eh up to now. We will get a little budget for invest, for loan farmers eh, or forgive to farmers eh. But the main thing say what we need for letting farmers there, become very independent, eh for able for grow, we no get eh. We no get eh. So I know say what we presidents can talk, or other ministers eh can talk, we all get a image for protect. We all get, maybe some get a political also image for protect a group for protect. Now this we call branding. But before one of the stats for brand, we for also accept the reality and talk the reality. That will get many lab system, now eh make the education set to know they grow, now eh make agriculture know they grow. Because we no get maybe the enough capital, or the capital eh, we no get the right people there for channeling capitals there, for bring about change. This now is setback for Salom. Now let we go into Exa. The party say Exa get Baku chief chief. Not true. I glad eh the party talker. They say the one day where they say Exa, them back, and eh can eh the civilians eh where we want chief, no I want pay for electricity, come to reality. Not true. Because the tax of electricity don't skyrocket as well, and eh they send eh excuse oh. But the more money people and they pay where go to electricity, that money they go to government. And governments capable challenge eh, in different ways there, for strengthening, for better Mama Salom. But if Exa, what in there they distribute, recount to the capital, and eh they receiver. How they go able submit, you know, what in the law obtain monthly or yearly, you know, to government? So governments eh complain about this. That eh go don't create such in voltage, such an amount of volt, eh for disseminate, for serve the public. Eh they expect such in capital. But what they tell me truly, Exa return back the money to government, the money eh they reach, and then eh flop. You know, so Exa get a private business, what eh they do pass eh, for capitalize, system failure. Another system failure. Even though yes, me they cry almost every week, they say we need, we need for reduce, you know, the tax or the fees there for Exa. Because where they put now 200, 300 leos, maybe like 30 or 40 or 50 credit where they get. Now eh burden for we also where they try for do business. So some like you want take shortcut, say ah, laugh fair way for call somebody, they can't play with me meter, so I no go to, you know, pay heavily. So I go to put on me freezer 24/7. Eh bad scene, eh corruption. So now the people also don't mix by the corruption, Exa they by the corruption, institution eh they by the corruption. In every facet involved by this corruption, for let Mama Salom no grow. I make low now understand this. Salom don't dumb bad, Salom don't fearful. We ready now the grown, now we understand this, eh don't tough, eh don't rough. Now, let me continue. So Exa, I guess that they try for create a reform eh within, then Cabal, that's how I put on eh Cabal. You know, the one day where they pass chief chief, oh money they fashion there. The one eh where they go eh, you know, sell light in different ways there. Well, governments no for get the benefit. Papa government for reap the benefit, for able for put this money eh, in different sector there, for better Salom. But Exa, no they contribute. So to me, eh alarming, yes, eh concerning to me, yes. Also, what's more concerning, the high rate tax where they pay. We no for struggle for light, lights no for be too expensive. You know, and the party talker, eh hungry man, eh eh hungry man. And if person they try for achieve, some of we will get things how they practice. But if person they try for reach society, eh no get sway, all thing tight, maybe go and finish shortcut. And a go and make low with big one, they understand this also. Eh one finish shortcut, but get to a destination. Eh right, no, a condola, no. We no to all man the practice, you know, good character, or good ethics, for remember that. You know? So the party hope say, we citizens then go become good. Go become good, we no pay on a tax, we no play on our own path, for eh government for grow. And NCC go fund Exa, I guess NCC get sacrament, we then go for use back for fund Exa. You know, for develop, you know, electrical system eh. So we no where they get blackout, but the party say for they get blackout, low beer. Where this blackout business, eh not show the experience in a Salom, until today start. So I want say would that accustomed, or don't used to, or don't acclimatize, but eh not suppose for be true. Light for the 24/7. Now let we continue. Let we continue. Also, eh we come to infrastructures there. Then discuss this, the airport, the bridge, the road eh, and the presidents say. In a infrastructural government, and to what we obtain, the way I me go put eh. Now the presidents this, where don't create more bridge eh, more roads eh, etc., etc., than any other government. But what in me they get? See, I don't eh they give, the presidents, the credit. Say the party make roads eh, oh, the party build bridges eh, oh. The party don't build airport eh, or run an event airport eh, and other other things eh. I know say for create developments like country, now eh always think thing, about different, different, you know, areas eh. Just let go start with education, you know, fit Salom, Exa, now they talk of infrastructure. And the parts more, where mona me small, because who say the part can't talk about Exa? Eh for don't discuss about human capital, I believe say be the question eh. Oh, no, no, youth employment, youth employment. But the party, I believe say eh discuss about Exa, what me watch on YouTube? We can, I no be the day physically. So we come to youth employment, work not eh. And if there things there eh they take place, hopefully in a Sivellunians eh, for building roads there, bridge, airport. Hopefully in a Sivellunians eh, they get the job, but we no say, we always get foreigners eh, we can become the contractors eh. But work not eh. We go blame the party too much, because work not eh. I go say yes, we go blame on small. But I want blame all the political groups eh, for them political biasness, for their own political greed. You know, for affect this country. Because APC time, companies eh be there. The moment where APC go out, then companies there are all go out. How for bring back companies eh, inside Salom, for youth man eh go get work. Eh become a very tough tax for this present government, eh tough. But who say them political groups eh, be the coordinate, the work together, for the betterment of this country. We no go explain too much what we call unemployment. So let me continue. We no say we get major labs this way come to the workforce. And eh we see Baku youth man eh in a Waska, in a garage, they do, you know, petty market. Get a new different hustle, whether illegal or illegal. The country tough. So again, they say we need to give credits to So again, they say we need to give credits to the government, for the road say, what they build. Then things are important, yes, because when I build bridge, nah quick access, easy access for move from one place to another. When I make road, they move quickly also, move it, if, if you not businessman, your products eh, your goods eh where they buy, they able transport eh quickly. But start eh nobody get problem so, you know, etcetera, etcetera, you know? The people eh say they still concern, what in that be the question also, or the minister ask the president. The people eh concerned, if some of them roads eh will be completed, in certain district, similar area, including Pudja. The person eh they work on eh. Maybe stay next year, the ending of next year also, starting of next year, you know, some of the roads are gonna be completed. But again, if, the panel say not to all man able feed three ten party. The education quality not, not strong enough. Where the poor money also on roads eh, which eh necessity. How we able lift this country go before? Well, why invest outside, and outside who say they make investment? I not say we need a rich society eh, but the ultimate goal, for the betterness of this country, so things then go be easy. So the price of goods not go goes too high, you know, because all man had the complaint for fear. But all what eh road, you know, the, the, the don't tie the, some road there, from one place to another place, inside one hour you don't reach, so they go take three, four hours. Still, what fear they go up, they go for charge that businessman heavy money, so him back come, that tax when they tax eh, they go for put eh agampon business. It tax customers them, customers they pay, eh, now the end consumer always they suffer. That possibly they go buy every day for survive, and they suffer, not to that businessman eh, not to that poda, poda driver eh, or that taxi man eh, or that keke man eh, or that kara man eh. Because you know so eh fear go up, and the customers eh go for pass and pass. So where they try for develop all facets or aspect, but still, the general population is suffer at large, at large. Why make we they express the constraints there inside salon? With all what eh would they try for do, with all what in governments they try for do. Something not balance proper, you know, something not balance proper. Something not balance proper eh, so, let me continue, then, the last but not the least, when we go and discuss. The economy, eh with them bridge there eh, where the president state eh. Eh they do eh because, after the betterment of the people eh, all man for become inclusive, to the growth and the betterment of salon, for get easy access or quick access for do what you want do. So not to just for, it's safe they make eh for, but not for all man. Not for all man, all inclusive, you know? But we still express, not eh good job, I want say kudos to you, you know, uh president B O, I want say kudos to you. Yes, maybe not so we all, or all man can acknowledge say, you de make roads, you know, bridges there, etcetera, etcetera, you know? Or some man can say, maybe, you know, this government, they work nah certain area, or the new area, they forget other districts there. Well, the other political party maybe also do the same thing, so um, how I put this? We need for reach to a point, when they inside salon, where eh no matter whose government, whose system, all tribe, all people, all man for benefits, eh no matter whose government we sit on. Because this ideology, say, where A P C come, now this area the benefits, where S A P P come, now that area the benefits, eh bad for we grow one. Because we all are one people, one country, eh bad for we grow one. All man for belong, all man for feel eh say the governments to work for them, the governments want please them, the governments want assist them. I don't eh cry about this, we wrote now, Macamar Road, this side McKinney, one eh hospital road, and a very important road back. Well, not start for blame for A P C, because they often don't know things eh this really important. They go eh make, make other road there, now everyday where they pass, and eh emphasize on this again, eh enforce on this. Everyday where they pass, would seek man eh, ambulance, or better woman eh, or possibly they die, now so so gallop, start in Macamar Road, to reach now hospital, so so gallop. The mayors eh can think eh, the councillors eh can think eh, the ministers eh when I can think eh. When I can think of what's important eh. Eh concern me eh, hospital road, thirty year old eh discuss, I don't eh cry about this for the past three, four years, thirty eh. Thirty eh. The way eh put dirty eh, put a potter back on the street, oh eh come, the streets some put a potter, put a potter, it's all messy, and that's what the experience right now outside. Now, let me continue, the economy, inflation, they go eh they talk about price there, where they go up, and then they deflect where they inflate. Things can just go up no more, the dollar currency, well, eh, eh just eh sky, eh just eh float, anyway eh the dollar want, the dollar just eh float. You know, so we currency eh they devalue, while the dollar eh add value. And the price of goods just eh inflate, now I say inflation. I be hearing some certain percentage, I don't know if this correct, from the minister, except for me eh, do the um, the question accent. From nineteen percent to nine percent, or fifty percent to thirty percent reduction where it can to inflation, and that's this governments don't do. I want make like incident eh, if eh they watch me now, if this talk eh talk not true. Is eh they meet inflation be high, now they don't reduce eh. Was that true fine for talk, from when I came eh into power, things eh just eh go high no more. The price of goods eh just eh go up no more, not eh not reduce, so I don't know who say you get your statistics, from fifty percent to thirty percent, or nineteen percent to nine percent. When I help me, me I don't understand, you know, when I help me, we go blame papa government for all thing. No, because even with the civilians eh, they contribute to eh inflation there, when I hear me talk earlier. The a businessman eh add extra, extra, you know, for make money, for capitalize, you know? Et sah, the party don't talk eh, then eh party own chief chief, you know, so institutions eh they, where they eh this inflation, for continuing for go up. We not get eh reduction eh, now all they continue for go, so mister minister, I want make go now eh, we can kind of the media eh, they talk of percentage there, you know, that will take time. You know, for name book quote soon eh today, future generations eh to come, we will quote soon eh all eh accountable. So take time eh they use you mat, or your judgment, or your postulations here. Because we not need for full the public, what in governments need for do, for make the public understand what in they go on. And that's we call a responsible government, not, not for kind of the media, or talk to people eh, for fool eh, for casual eh. Like gimmick, not eh trick, eh bad, because once them people eh I wake up, they get understanding, they go vex. Eh fine for put the people eh down, and make sure say when I make them understand, the truth and the reality, of what in they go on inside salon. And that's could bring about change, and that's could help world for grow, you know, so again, the price all eh go up. You know, and the party talk eh I said, the previous political groups there, more where it can to diamond, they will mineral assets there. Some eh use for travel, go market, the idea say they get certain land, who belong to them, the first can groups there, for come, look for minerals there, that money go stay in eh the pocket, well now, papa government say, any group eh can a salon, for carry shirts for minerals, for can do business eh can into minerals, any two where they find, sixty percent eh left to government. Sixty percent eh left for the serelionians there, then we go with the four, forty percent, or sixty percent eh left for the government and the people of salon. Now eh a good contract, now eh a good idea, so now, maybe, even though this eh a good idea, then investors there eh, where use for come, for can chief minerals in a salon, we will get beaucoup of eh game for come. They never come, because they don't use to the old system. They don't use to the old system, so they wonder eh, we will exploit them, we will pay them cheap, we will take their minerals there, we go become millionaires and billionaires. So at times eh good for suffer small, for the right thing. Because, with other political groups there, they be use for eh benefits where it can to minerals and the resources there. They not be the taxing people eh sixty percent, but this current government, S A P P, don't snap straight and say they will charge, any group eh one come, for invest into minerals, what, what, any two way you find, any two way you remove, sixty percent eh left for the serelionians. When I go with the forty, you know, so last but not the least, governments also say, they not get any complaint where it can to salary, they always eh pay salary on time. That part eh, I just eh anger so, I left eh so, when I get sense eh get sense, when I don't get sense eh think eh twice. Not to all thing Tasmoh for open you brain you hate for, you know, I will create some pointers there, you do the thinking. But papa government say, they not get any problem where it can to salaries them, because they de pay salaries them on time eh to all man. If also that's not eh fact, if, now eh really conjunction, if, conjunction again, if that's not eh fact, and also, papa government also emphasize eh, they increase the pay of teachers there, and other, other institutions there, if that's also not eh fact, eh teachers there eh, not for go eh, try for dupe with students in our school, or exploit with students in our school. Because now governments to increase payment, governments eh pay you on time, it's about time, they do you work correct. But most of the institutions there eh, now they do their work correct up to low. You know, which they bring the downfall of any government for grow, not to just the school eh, but every facets now. If they let eh do their work correct, salon eh go go no side. I want conclude this episode eh, so I know I take all on a time, now the boy again Tasmoh sleeves the servant A K A, would that Sabian finish eh with me? Be peko, nobody know for take em person eh, what we don't discuss eh, but they will learn from it. Now we share ideas them, for better mama salon, when I still bless once more.